I'm ready to come to order.
All right, we'll bring this meeting to order on June 17th with the agenda. Item number one, approval of summary minutes of the June 3rd, 2014 regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I approve. I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion about the minutes? Harry Dunn, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Administrative items. Item number two, overview of the U.S. Postal Service mailbox mail delivery regulations. We'll hear from city staff, Dean Andrew.
Shortly after Mr. Welsh had a conversation with the new postmaster, I had a visit from the U.S. Post Office and they came over and said that there had been changes to postal operations and they felt that the planning staff needed to get out and educate Planning Commission, the building and development community about changes that the U.S. Post Office made and didn't bother to tell anybody. And those changes, it indicates that their district was notified. This was a letter and you can see the date on it. There's a little bit of time lag between April 5, 2013 and May 22, 2014. What I had found this letter and it does kind of, we walk through and it explains the changes, but it turned out that some, a group of planners, statewide organization in North Carolina was upset that they knew nothing about the Post Office changing how subdivisions were going to get their mail delivered to them and were somehow expected to, in their development of new residential subdivisions, get that implemented or incorporated into that. So they got with their congressional delegation there in North Carolina and the congressional delegation met with officials of the U.S. Postal Service and said they had met with municipal planners throughout North Carolina and they knew nothing about the changes to the postal delivery and it would be a good idea if the Post Office communicated with municipal planners. So we found this letter. It was not addressed to any planners in Kansas or for any planners anywhere in the United States except for the Charlotte, North Carolina area, but we put it up there because it's a good change, or summary of the changes that they have kind of unilaterally made. And the first and foremost bullet point there is that centralized and cluster box units delivery is now the default mode of delivery in business areas. We were certainly not aware of that, but I guess if you looked at a place like Galaxy Center out on South Ninth Street, if that were done today, then somewhere out in the front area or within the parking lot there at Galaxy Center, they would have to, we'd have to find a place for some sort of centralized or cluster box unit. And then bullet point two there, for new residential delivery, and they don't really define what that is, the cluster box unit is now the default mode of delivery. And then exceptions to permit curb line delivery must be approved by the district, meaning that the local postmaster still has the discretion to allow for curb line delivery, which is your standard mailboxes out at the street. I think what we have learned and what Mr. Welsh has learned is that Mr. Richard Brake retired and he was basically still allowing the curb line delivery in new subdivisions. A new postmaster came on board and he was no, indicated he was no longer going to allow new curb line mailboxes. And so what they've even indicated is that they have even reserved the right to change the mode of delivery within an existing block. So if you had a subdivision like we have many, Quail Meadows Estates or Magnolia Hills Estates where it's a larger subdivision, but the streets and sidewalks and all go in in phases, that you could have phase one through four with curbside delivery and that they could dictate that phase five have the curb side boxes. Well, one of the challenges with that is it's a lot easier when a plat is first being laid out to try to plan for locations of where you would locate a mailbox strategically that would serve the needs of the subdivision and not block visibility to driveway or not, you know, you need to know where streetlights are going, fire hydrants are going, sidewalks are going. In the case of Mr. Welsh's subdivision on Quail Hollow Drive, there's a ditch in behind, so West Star is putting their utility boxes out in the front. And so when you start trying to fit all these things out into that front right of way, you need to plan ahead. And so what the Postal Service has not done, but is being pressured to do is it would be far preferable if they would say, "All subdivisions already approved or grandfathered, but any new residential subdivision approved after this date is subject to the curb side, or elimination of the curb side and substitution of the cluster box units." So we put in your packet, a informational packet that they put together for builders and developers and they have some specifications for how that is done. They really don't care if the developer wants to spend extra money and, you know, put a pitched roof or shelter or do something architecturally interesting over the centralized mailbox, if that works. So John, do you want to try to, you said you were going to try to walk us through that packet? Are you, you're going to mostly focus on the graphics?
Sure.
So this is kind of like their, their sales pitch to the development community and home builders as to the negatives of curb side mailboxes and the positives of, of the community So the first part of this is devoted to telling us all the bad things about curb side mailbox receptacles. You want, John, you might want to go back to the top of that so we can go through it a little more, no, no, or it's a sensible approach. So they, they think that obviously they can minimize dog bites to their postal workers. They think that cluster boxes would be a good location for neighbors to gather and get acquainted with one another, improving community. As a community gathering area, it's a, it's a centralized focal point for added neighborhood watch security. I'm not sure what that means. And so supposedly these boxes would have a place that's obviously would be locked and so it would be more secure receptacle than just a, on the door mailbox or curb side mailbox. You can keep going, John. They indicate it would reduce neighborhood traffic. That not, they say that curb side mailboxes can be unsightly. They reduce mail theft, identity theft, and of course, the main difference is cost. I guess, it depends on whose cost it is. It says per address, the community or cluster box units cost less per address than a decorative mailbox. The difference is, I believe that if you purchase a home or purchase a new home, that a lot of times the homeowner is going to pick and choose and bear the cost of putting the curb side mailbox in, whereas in this case, the developer would be responsible for selecting, purchasing and installing a community mailbox, which is something that certainly wasn't anticipated at, at the time that the subdivision was related. So parking would be less restricted where you have the community mailbox. And I, I don't understand this part and maybe Mr. Welsh has, has learned more than we have, but it says, "The cluster box units have customer names and addresses unseen and secure behind locked doors." And if I'm living in a neighborhood, I don't know how I would retrieve my mail unless my box had an address or something on it. Mr. Purney can share with us?
I have a CBU delivery at my home in Colorado and you have a number, just a code number like A8 on your box and you have a key for that box. The num, the names are on the inside, for the person that's delivering the mail are on the backside of the box. The whole back opens up in a big, big unit at a time, like eight or 12 to 16 at a time. And though, they work like pigeonhole sorting to put the mail in. And each one of those has the customer's name on it, but when the door is closed, nobody can see it.
So how do you know that you are A8 and who decided?
Cause you sign up for them like you sign up for a Post Office box downtown. You have to have that number assigned to you. And in Colorado, in our, in our community, they have gone back at the pub, at the Post Office expanse and installed them in existing neighborhoods. Of course, one of the big differences is in the old part of town, they did not have door-to-door delivery of any kind until they have CBUs. And it's not door-to-door like ours is a block from our house, but at any rate, it is, number one, above all, it is a money-saving thing for the U.S. Postal Service to stop the number, to reduce the number of stops. My family's been in the delivery contracting business for 40 years now and I personally helped deliver it at some of these sometimes. And the problem is, you open that big door and the wind's blowing 45 miles an hour like it does in Kansas and Colorado, then it's really difficult to hang on to the mail, get it into the boxes and, and that's just a nuisance for the people doing the work more than anything else, but it is another disadvantage of the system.
How many units are contained in the mailbox you're referring to in Colorado? How many different dwelling units are served by that one box?
Well, I need to look at the pictures in here, but in our neighborhood, there are like six units side by side. Each one of them has, I think, 12 in it. Is that possible?
Six to one.
Yeah.
Could be 12.
So when they're showing us these pictures of the visual clutter of having roadside mailboxes, but I mean, if you had six of those in a row on a street face?
That's what, that's what you have on Third Street in Estes Park, Colorado.
So doesn't that occupy?
Fourth Street.
Doesn't that occupy a lot more space than, than that does?
It occupies more space, well, it'd be like 16 or 12 where those four boxes are and they're all in one metal case.
There's one on Martin, they just put one in on Martin Street and it's just small. I mean, it holds, it must have for those.
Some of them are only 16.
Probably 16 in there and it's not, it doesn't occupy a large space. It's about that wide and fairly tall.
And the other advantage they talk about is that you'll see these larger ones that are about two feet square. Those are for parcels and if you get a parcel, when you open your box, there'll be a key for the parcel box and you can go grab your package. So it does save some shuttling around on parcels.
So in terms of, instead of leaving it on your front porch, they would?
They lock it in that bigger box.
In those bigger boxes like you see there?
Right.
So is that pretty similar to what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's, oh, they are 16, yeah. It's almost exactly like that, except there are six of them in a row instead of three.
Well, what, at least when we read through this, the, the idea is that the, the postal delivery person's going to park their vehicle. They're going to go on the sidewalk on the backside to do the delivery.
Correct.
If you could go back a slide, John. It looks to me like the postal customer or the resident is going to park in the street, get out and then go to their box.
That's the way it works.
It's in the material though, it's in the material designed properly so that you don't have customers in the curb and gutter or standing in the street to pick up their mail. And it shows some examples in the material you sent us of how they locate those back from the curb and then have a little concrete slab so you can stand on it and not have to drop it straight.
That's kind of a later refinement.
Yeah.
Where you're standing in the, in the curb line.
That would be, as of today, that would be illegal. As I talked to the postmaster today, you could not do that today. As you imagine a sidewalk in between the curb and the sidewalk, you would have to face it, if you were going to put your box between the curb and the sidewalk, it would have to face where the clients pick up their mail, customers pick up their, it would have to face the sidewalk. If you put it on the opposite side of the sidewalk, out of the right of way, between the sidewalk and the backyard or whichever, you can face it towards the sidewalk, but you have to put it back a little bit away so that somebody walking by wouldn't be intruding to somebody stopping and getting their mail.
That's what talks about it.
Yeah, so I mean, I read that whole packet.
Are you saying that the, it's now entirely flipped, that the, the mail delivery person is going to load it from the street side and the customers are going to unload it from the sidewalk side?
I believe that the ones that I just purchased, the whole front opens up and they load it from the front and then they shut the door from the front that's there. So if they're standing there, see how he's, he's loading that from the front, there's no way, at the bottom picture? Those basically open from the front now, not from the rear, and he's feeding all that and then he'll shut. You can see by, there's no, you wouldn't stand in the back grass to get your mail.
And then we shut them, they have little individual doors.
And then when he shuts them, they're all individuals that they can open, but they have a master key.
Well, the other thing about it is, is that most of us look at these as being mounted parallel to the street. And if you looked at this one carefully, it's not like many of them are mounted at a right angle to the street for a couple reasons. And one of them is to accommodate a sidewalk for handicapped and so forth. The other one is, is that visually it doesn't take up as much space.
There is.
You could have a row of them running at 90 degrees to the street between two easements on the house, but if you put one of those in front of a lot, you sort of.
There is one, and one of the things that there I think is an advantage to me is many of us have concerns now about putting our outgoing mail in a just regular mailbox at the street side and putting a flag up because of security and identity theft. And those have locked deposits, so you don't have to drive down to Post Office or find a mailbox somewhere on the street to put your outgoing mail in. It's pretty handy, drop it in there. So I called the Post Office and said, "Can anyone use the outgoing mail slots in these?" And the answer to that is no, only the people that have boxes in those can use the outgoing mail slot.
But how, how would they keep someone else from using it?
Well, I suppose if they saw my return address on my neighbor who has one of those, they'd, they'd say, "He's not one of the box holders in this system." And they probably could come down and say, "Hey, you're not supposed to be using it." But I called to ask and they said no. I thought if they were belonging to the Post Office, maybe anyone could use them, but the answer to that is no, they belong to the property owners, so to speak. And so they can only use it.
So if they belong to the property owners, who has proprietary use of that box? Can it be used by UPS or FedEx or, I mean, if the, why does the, United States Postal Service has the only, only use of that box?
Well, they're the ones providing the locks for the box. As I purchased two yesterday, the Postal Service will provide the locks as well as, see on the bottom right there, which you guys were talking about where the package is, they, only the Postal Service and then I never really questioned on how they would have, get into the parcel box, but you're saying they leave you a key that would do that. To answer your question on the, the number on there, as I talked to Steve, the postmaster today, I had told him what I had done and luckily enough, my addresses were all only three numbers, so like 632 Quail Hollow, but then I also had a 632 Prairie Lane. So I would have to have two boxes that were 632. And so we went a little further and he scratched his head for a little bit and he said, "Well, why don't you just put a P after one and a Q after the other?" Made sense to me because the place that I purchased it from, you got four letters or any type of engraving on there, so I put all of Prairie Lane is like 620P, 632P, and then the Quail Hollow is all in Qs. When I went down there, met with him today, I shared with him what I'd done. He goes, "Well, you went way far and beyond what our expectations are going to be. What we're expecting people to do is have them one through 50 and then you as the developer or when you sell off a lot, you would hand them the number, coordinate to that. So if John bought lot 16 from me, you may get box 16 and when you sell the house as a home builder, you would pass that along to the person purchasing and they just know that it's number 16." Now that all sounds great until you think about, what's the maze is development out there, Stone Lake? With how many lots?
Hundred.
A hundred lots. I don't know if you're going to put separate cluster boxes for different streets, whether you're going to have one cluster box at the very beginning, or whether you're going to have a hundred cluster boxes or, you know, 12 cluster boxes lined up at 16 each, or whether you're going to put them at different streets and, and where you're going to put them. Luckily, I was able to meet with the postmaster. We selected a spot and it's going to work for us. And I didn't have the choice to wait because I've already got people living in my subdivisions who put up mailboxes, only to find out they're not, they're not getting mail for two weeks. And we found out and they just said, "This is what we're going to do." So I wasn't going to fight the U.S. Government, I just did it and got to get it done because my clients aren't very happy right now living in there.
What do you think about Todd as a developer now that you bought them? Is that going to be, is that okay? Is it works okay as a developer?
As long as you have a, if it was done way up front, luckily, I found a place where two backyards meet on a particular street because there's, I mean, other than that, they'd had to be in somebody's front yard.
Most people wouldn't want these right in front of their house and have the, the neighborhood meeting space in front of their front door. That's, that's part of the, the sighting that goes into it and then part of it is making sure that you understand the orientation. So this engraving and everything that you did, that was basically put in internally on the inside?
No, it's engraved on the outside.
Okay.
So it says, my, my particular one has the address, 632Q, which will go with 632 Quail Hollow. So when they buy a house, I'll hand them that key.
They will know. The other thing is that, and it's in your packet there, but they have some pretty precise specifications for the concrete pad that this is located on and, you know, that, that's going to be almost like pouring a, a pad in the right of way, just like you do a driveway approach or that type of thing. But the, the thing to think about is it looks like these have to be at least four feet wide and then of varying lengths, but in a, in a standard subdivision such as Pheasant Ridge Number Two, the street right of way is going to be 60 feet. The width of the street is going to be 33 feet back to back. So that basically leaves you about 13 and a half feet between the curb line and the property line. And then the, the sidewalk is generally going to be poured right on the inside of the property line. And so that generally leaves somewhere in the neighborhood of between eight and nine feet between the sidewalk and the curb line. And so that's going to be the most common location where that would go. And it's yet another argument against having curb side sidewalks because if you had a curb side sidewalk, basically you'd be putting the mailbox right inside the sidewalk. We require sidewalks to be located back on the property line in new developments. But the other drawback is if you are choosing a vacant lot, we allow the construction of sidewalks to be deferred until the house is constructed. So that's another important thing is you go out there and try to find the, the perfect site for the community mailbox, you're probably not going to have a sidewalk in the right of way as, as a point of reference. So this, this pad and this mailbox is going to get placed first and then the sidewalk's going to get constructed later. But you didn't have fire hydrants or streetlights or anything else to worry about. And you chose a location that's probably not going to be where somebody wants to put their driveway.
Well, in essence, it doesn't sound like there's an option. And so there's not an option, so it just becomes part of the design feature of the development.
Right. But it's a lot easier, it's a lot easier to have it as a design feature when you're first.
Sure.
When, when you're planning the layout for a subdivision, you're planning the lots, you're planning prospective driveway locations, you're locating hydrants, you're figuring out where streetlights are going to go. The other thing it does, which we worked on Pheasant Ridge Number Two, there's, there's two reasons, but under our Salinas addressing scheme, your address is not officially assigned until a building permit is issued for a building or a home. And because of our, the city's introduction of the use of GovPartner software, which is address-based and what we're learning here, it's basically going to require the city and city staff to go in and work with the developer and at the time of initial plating, work out what the addresses are going to be, because you probably don't want to wait and get your addresses engraved one by one by one as homes are built and permits are issued, but.
Dean, they normally just have numbers on them. Todd went above me, "Normally they just have number one through 10 or one through 12 or one through 14." And I buy a house, I've got mailbox, just like the old days, I have mailbox number 10. And I know that. And I'm given number 10 key. And that's, that's kind of what they are. I don't, and that's what you have out there, they're just numbered. You don't have to have your, your home. Todd did his and I think it's neat what you do, but I think the requirement is it's just numbered one through 12. If you've got 12 boxes, I might get box peel, box number 10 or real box 10.
I just think from a, from a developer standpoint, though, you're going to, I mean, it's not going to be rocket scientist, but you have to figure out where those go. You have to figure out who's going, how does the key, if the, if the postman puts the lock in there once you sell it, how does the tent, how does the homeowner get the key? Does the post, so the Post Office guy, you go down there and say, "I just bought a house and I need you to put a lock on and give me the key." I mean, just some things you have to figure out to get it done. I honestly, I didn't like the idea when I first saw it, was very, we had to take a couple of days to kind of think about it and then I just, and I would have been, I'm way more for it if they can tell me at the very beginning where to put them. I just luckily had one spot. If I didn't have that particular spot, I don't know what we would do because they'd be in somebody's front yard and you wouldn't want that. Although I guess you have bus stops in your front yard now, so I'm not sure.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sure the difference between a cluster box and a green, a green benches.
Do you know what the dimensions are of your box and did you have a whole bunch of aesthetic designs to choose from or did you just go with a, a design like, like that?
I went with a design that said $350 discount and it's called Postal Gray.
So it's not going to be an aesthetic feature for your subdivision?
No, sir. No, sir, you're not going to be, it's nothing you're going to see me in the paper for.
You don't have a poppy seed, all covered over? You don't serve coffee right when they get their mail?
Doesn't look anything like that.
You should serve coffee when they get their mail in the morning.
I'm going to have Brad Anderson paint one, paint it up for me.
Well, if we're going to have fun, let's wait till they decide that we're going to do away with all existing home delivery at the curb or on the house. That'll happen.
That's for the city planner to figure out where they're going to go.
They'll take all the fun out of there real fast.
I quickly went and get these in existing neighborhoods. I need to paint my mailbox pole. Should I do that or can I just wait a little bit and I'll get a new box?
Wait until you get a whole new box. Let's move on.
So Ken, do you want to share, how did they know, or were you one of the customers that got switched to the community box on Martin?
No, it's just down the street. It's on the corner down the street from me. They put it in. It's the, it's the entry duplexes and they put them, they put a new one in for all the duplexes and it's right there on the corner. It's not placed exactly right, I think, by these standards, but that, when I saw it, I was excited. I think it's a great idea. I like it and, and I'd love to have it because I don't like to have to go to a mailbox all the time and mail my letters. So I called and said, "Can I mail my letters in there?" And they said, "No." And so that answered that question. So now my, now as I said, my mailbox pole needs to be painted, so if I think I'm going to get one, I'm going to put a painting in another year.
I, I think we're far along from going to this totally.
I was just, I was just wondering how the Post Office might have communicated that to the, to the duplex owners or?
They had, I think that duplex had door, door delivery before.
Okay.
A door-to-door delivery and apparently the Post Office said, "We won't do that anymore" because they just put it in. The duplexes were already developed and they just put that mailbox in. And that happened about six months ago. You know, when?
Door-to-door though, right now, I have in the last probably five years have been asked, "Would you like to have your mail delivered to the curb?" And was it explicable? No, is what I said.
What happens is happening with a handicap and that kind of people? Handicap and elderly, how do they get their mail?
Right away, that's right.
You have a handicap or elderly person in your development, are they going to deliver it to his door?
Nope.
So this guy's going to have to wheel his wheelchair down or his electric cart down in the rain to get his mail?
Right.
So one of the things though, and particularly in the pictures they showed, what happens with the journal boxes? So, one of the things, though, and particularly in the pictures they showed, what happens with the journal boxes?
Those aren't legal.
Okay. So, what does that mean, though? I mean, maybe they're not legal, but where we see them all over. So.
Well, the journal boxes, I believe, are mostly in the county and not within the city limits. They would not be permissible inside the city. Basically, the federal government has given themselves an exemption. If you have a mailbox that meets the federal government's specifications, the city doesn't have much control over it. I think we would like, what we're saying is we would like to work with developers to come up with a mutual site. And what we will work towards is when we have a residential subdivision come in and we're looking at the layout and things, and one of the things that we want the developer and the planning commission, everybody to look at upfront is to say what would be the best location and try to pin that down on the plat, as opposed, it's a lot more difficult if you're Stone Lake or if you're Mr. Welsh to do it as an afterthought after everything's laid out and in than it is when you're thinking about it upfront.
And I would say it's going to be about a $3,000. I mean, I figure I'm going to invest about three grand that I didn't expect.
That you weren't expecting to.
Didn't expect it, you know. So, it's not like I don't think, maybe I could. I don't even know. Maybe charge a hundred dollars per box.
What about the pad itself? Are they going?
That's what I mean. I figure I've got $980 per box and then I'm going to spend anywhere from.
So, are they going to come out and inspect it once it's installed and decide whether you've met their specifications or?
They can come see it afterwards. I'm going to go off their specs in this packet and I'm going to put it in based off that.
Well, it sounds like we've talked to this about that. It sounds like it's not an option. And developers need to be made aware of it. We need to move on.
But the, what, the major concern, I've read a number of publications from home builders' associations, developers, municipal planners that all said, "It would have been nice if the post office had informed somebody of this so that we could take it into account as we're looking at new areas." Because it's another equation and on our next agenda topic, it's the same thing. And it's going to reach a point where, you know, some of us have, we have our lots and we have our front yard and our right of way in front of our house is almost pristine. And now, we're going to get to the point where we're trying to stick so many things in that right of way area between the sidewalk and the street that it's really going to change the look and feel of residential areas in people's yards. But I guess our, my first question was, we put this packet that we found from the post office, furnished that to Mr. Welsh. Did you find that helpful?
Well, my only question is, is do I need a permit, if I'm going to put this in the right of way, do I need a permit from engineering?
Well, we, our, the city is going to work towards, we think that the pad or the concrete pad in there being in the right of way, that we would have our public works inspector inspect that just like he would a sidewalk or driveway approach.
And how, and if I'm given this, are you like saying you're going to draft that up? Or is that now, do I need to do that? How would I be notified that I would need to do that?
I think what we're going to say, we'd like to see what developers is to take a copy of their plat layout, indicate, have them bring it into the city offices and indicate on there where they plan to put their community mailbox, how many units it's going to be, the dimensions and the size of the pad that they're proposing to pour. And then probably do a right of way permit like we would for the installation of a sidewalk or a.
So, even like with this one, I'm going to need to get it all prepared and then call David?
Yes. And have him come out and inspect it.
You know, to be honest with you, being a person who lives in the county and who's had my mailbox vandalized just numerous times, just over and over again, and I don't know what the number is in the city of people who have their mailboxes vandalized, I would actually be very appreciative to have this kind of setup. It would actually be a real advantage.
And I, I think it's more the fact that it was, one, a surprise and, two, that there was no gradual implementation. Or this would be much easier if they said, "Starting this date, new subdivisions have to have this", instead of going in and trying to shoehorn it into existing. There were situations there, I think in one block in Charlotte, North Carolina, there were 22 roadside mailboxes and the postal service said, "We don't care. We're not going to deliver to them." And it's like, "Yeah, but nobody knew. And we all put these in in good faith and we don't care. We're not going to deliver to it." And that's what incensed a lot of the developers and.
Is there really anything that we can do about that, though? I guess, I mean, I understand and that makes perfect sense. I mean, I think you guys are right. It would be much better to do it upfront, absolutely, to know upfront from the very beginning. But is there anything that we can actually do about that?
No, we are, all we can do is what we couldn't tell and what we will try to do internally and basically put it up in the steps so that we can hand it to somebody like Mr. Welsh. We don't have a process for reviewing and approving locations and plans. But basically, today, to place a concrete pad in the right of way for one of these mailboxes would take a right of way permit from engineering and have Mr. Kohart come out and inspect it like you would a curb or a sidewalk or driveway installation. It's just, everybody's completely unprepared for it and we need to familiarize ourselves with the post office's specifications. But what they asked us to do was to put this on as an agenda item and the post office asked us to do outreach and education. And one of the reasons I asked about whether you found that packet useful is that we will probably send this to the Home Builders Association, the Board of Realtors, put it in our Development Services newsletter. We may even do a press release on it just so that there's some public awareness. I've had to deal with issues in some places where homeowners have complained because people picking up mail were driving over the back of the curb and putting ruts in their yard and things like that. And so, generally, if these have been placed in front of a home, sometimes those people aren't happy with what happens there in terms of pickup. But this, the reason that this is a, put on here as administrative item is that there's not anything that we can do about this other than react to it and try to come up with the best plan. And so, city staff would like to work with developers and we'd like to work with planning commissioners in the future as we look at the layout of these places to try to pre-plan locations and allow for them. And I don't, I don't think we're going to be doing anything beyond that. But it's just something to consider that you don't want to put one of these in and then somebody builds a house and they have a driveway and they can't see back and out of the driveway because this mailbox got misplaced. And so, that would be our primary concern, that they're in the right of way and we don't want them to be something that obstructs visibility because they're going to be more than three feet tall.
I think that if you put these in the pack, that ought to be a priority.
The post office service is trying to make its, make up for lost time. Because when we talked about this and talked about curbside mailboxes and distributed antenna systems, I expected a packet that would be about that thick for distributed antenna systems. I'm looking at this and this is this much for that. It's a thick packet.
That leads us into administrative item number three.
That's right.
And number three is an explanation of what distributed antenna systems are. And that is the next, we're into the next wave. And one of the things we wanted to do in our report here is just summarize. We completely wrote and rewrote our Wireless Communication Facilities Ordinance in 2001. It has been widely replicated by other communities in Kansas, including Manhattan, which basically used it as a template for their own. And for the most part, it has worked pretty well in that you're not seeing a lot of the activity that occurs. But so far this year, I have processed 14 antenna co-locations that where Sprint, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Nextech are adding additional antennas around the community. And the way that our ordinance is set up is it makes it easier to co-locate on an existing structure or tower and it makes it harder to build new towers. And so, on page two of your report that we sent out is basically a listing of every place in the city where we have a, what we would refer to as a cell tower. And there are 11 locations and we have them listed there chronologically as to which came first. And what you'll see is that they are pretty geographically dispersed around the community. And so, when we talk about wireless communication service, the two things, the two Cs that we look at are coverage. And coverage is having a system of towers that are distributed geographically so that all parts of the community have cellular coverage. And then the other aspect of that is capacity. And so, what we are finding is with smartphones and data consumption and all those things, that capacity continues to be an issue. And the way that you build capacity is to have smaller, more closely spaced antennas to relay the system along and provide additional capacity for all the data and voice communication that's going on. And so, this kind of illustrates how it would work. But basically, what we're seeing and the city's been approached by a third party and what that third party wants to do is get a franchise to establish fiber optic cable and put it in the right of way throughout the city and then to locate or place antennas on top of mostly pre-existing utility poles or streetlights and then to lease that antenna capacity or that structure for antennas to the various service providers. So, it's not Verizon or AT&amp;T or Nextech or Sprint that is installing the DAS. They're, that's left to someone else. And so, the primary distinctions of what we're talking about is that the network is denser, the sites are closer together, they're lower in height. But the main thing that we're talking about is we're back out in the right of way again. And there are two aspects to a DAS system and they're not, they're not all that well documented in these photos that we have in your packet in here. But the elements are, and this is not, this is not what an antenna looks like. What that is, is there's an antenna inside of there. And what that community, through their planning commission, decided was that for visual purposes, that antenna should be behind a paint, what's called a painted shroud or just a shroud that's around the antenna. So, if you drive by the monopole that is over there by Kenwood Cove and you're waiting to see the antennas put up on top of it or mounted on it, you're not going to see that because the antennas are actually inside the pole. And so, in the case like this, there's an antenna mounted on the top of the streetlight, but then there's a shroud put around it. And then, could you lift that up a little bit, John? And I can't. Are you trying to show in a cabinet on the ground or is it on the pole?
This one is on the pole.
Okay. Is that other one on the ground?
Uh, yes.
Can you lift that up where we can? So, there's a utility box or equipment cabinet. What we have learned is that Westar is willing to allow antennas to be placed on certain power poles subject to their approval. However, they will not allow those equipment boxes to be mounted on the poles. They have to be mounted on the ground at the base. And so, once again, when we were thinking about this, we have to think about locations for antennas. Then we also have to think about locations for boxes.
Could they disguise those boxes on the ground as cluster boxes?
Perhaps make them look like mailboxes and then you wouldn't be able to tell. But what, I guess, and it was done jokingly, but we were discussing this and we were picking on your subdivision up there. But you could conceivably have, on a street like Quail Hollow, you could have the little green boxes for Westar out front for the electronic transformers. Then you could have the mailbox cluster. Then you could have someone approach you about, or the city, about putting an antenna on top of a streetlight out there and then want to have one of those boxes that would go at the base instead of on the pole. And so, you're driving down the street and you've got the electric boxes and you've got the mailbox and then you've got the.
And then a CityGo bus, so they could put a bench, put the CityGo bus bench in front of there.
So, pretty soon, the right of way is going to, well, and the other concern, and that's not necessarily a concern for the planning, I think, the two, the three things that are elements of this is, one, you have the antennas, how high, what should they look like, where should they go? Then you've got the utility boxes. And then the third aspect of this that they don't really discuss is what are called antenna hubs. And antenna hubs can range into a size up to 500 square feet. And they are little houses or buildings where, and I think you've got, you've got that at your places up there, a little handout. But basically, if I've got this system and I've got Verizon and I've got Sprint and I've got AT&amp;T, I build a little antenna hub and I put, I put that building and everybody's servers and equipment is inside of that and it's an actual building. So, in building this network, you've got to find locations for the antennas. You've got to find locations for the boxes. Are they on the pole? Are they on the ground? If they're on the ground, are they going to block driveways or site or any of those type of things? And so, the company that the city is working with does not think that we have the authority to use our zoning to regulate the placement of the antennas or their aesthetics. But the city and city attorney think that we do. So, we're moving forward on that assumption. And so, the problem that we have is that the zoning code does not apply to the right of way. Somebody came in to me and say, "I want a permit to do this in the right of way." I can't do that because zoning only applies to private property. So, we would need some amendments to the code to allow that. But some of the things that should be thought about is, should they be allowed in residential neighborhoods? Should there be height, spacing, aesthetic standards, those type of things? So, the city believes that we have the authority to regulate those through the zoning authority. And so, on page six of your report there, it just kind of gives you an idea that we're working with the city attorney to draft a new section of the zoning ordinance and it would establish criteria for permitting the placement of antennas on top of utility poles and streetlight poles. And it would have maximum heights and antenna circumference and colored materials. Let's say, can you go back to the one with, I guess, this one right here? What we would like to do is when we speak to screen or camo. What we would like to do is, when we speak to screening or camouflaging, let's say that this box is in front of my house. One of the things we've talked about is giving the abutting property owner, homeowner, if I want to go to Ace or Waters True Value and get a fake rock or something to camouflage, and put some decorative boulder over the top of that because I don't want to look at it, then the homeowner who has that in front of their house should have the ability to do that. And so that's what we mean by screening or camouflaging. And then the other thing is that we require underground wiring in many of our subdivisions, including Pheasant Ridge Number Two, so we don't want these providers out putting overhead wiring in those areas. One of the things with having underground wiring is you have fewer existing poles. Most of the poles that are in your subdivision, they simply are streetlight poles, right? You don't have a whole bunch of overhead utility poles or power poles there. So it's a pretty clean look. And so the other question that you have to address is, what if we've got poles that just aren't in the right place? Can we put in a replacement pole that looks like some of the other poles? Should the utility boxes be on the pole or on the ground? And then probably the biggest question is, should they be allowed to put these networks in all of our residential neighborhoods, or should they be limited to commercial and arterial streets? So what we wanted to do was bring this forward to you, explain what DAS is, that it's coming. We can't really deny them the ability to provide service, but the Federal Telecommunications Act does give cities the right to regulate, as long as we don't unreasonably discriminate or have the effect of prohibiting. So we believe that the zoning authority is still preserved, and that we can regulate their placement as long as we don't discriminate between providers. So with that, I would see if you have any questions about what we have presented, and what we would ask for today is for you to authorize staff to initiate a text amendment that would address the proposed placement of DAS facilities on poles located in the public right-of-way.
I've got a couple of real quick ones. Providers, is there a compensation from the provider for the city to use?
They initially said no, now they're saying yes.
Okay. The whole question is, does the city have the only option? Let's say I own a parking lot here of a business, and I have light poles all over that parking lot.
That option is presently available today, but what the system needs is that they need to link these antennas together with fiber optic cable, and obviously, the right-of-way is the best continuous path to do that. So the private property option that says, "Well, this business has a parking lot light pole, we'll use that." You could put an antenna on it, but you would have difficulty linking the system. So what they want to do is, they want to use the right-of-way that provides them the linkages. Now, what you have to understand is that Westar, and Kansas Gas, and AT&amp;T all have franchise agreements with the city, and they pay the city of Salina an annual fee for the privilege of being able to place their poles and wires and everything in the right-of-way. This group initially didn't wish to, but now the other prong of this is, the city attorney's working on a franchise agreement that would address that side of it, which is compensation for the right to use the right-of-way. What this side of it is exactly that, is to regulate the use of, or the placement of poles that are located within the right-of-way, and, you know, to give you as many examples as we can as far as height and appearance and things like that, so we could establish some ground rules. I don't think many of us would want to have a 75-foot antenna in a residential area mounted on top of a power pole or streetlight. So looking at height, looking at circumference, looking at color and materials, those type of things, what we would ask is for the planning commission to authorize a text amendment to be initiated, and then to give us feedback or guidance on addressing those things that we've kind of identified on page six there. Height, aesthetic appearance, circumference, camouflaging, size, and location of boxes, those types of things. But it's like the cluster mailbox, it's not something we can say, "No, we refuse." It's just that we can say, "Well, yes, you can do it, but we reserve the right to regulate how and where." And so that's what this is intended to address.
You know, I have a question. When it talked in here about carriers' carrier, are we talking about one company, or are we talking about multiple companies?
We're talking about one company, and I kind of will point you out to the page four there, and it talks about the carriers' carrier. What the carriers' carrier is, is basically, a lot of these companies like Verizon and Sprint and them, they just want to focus on providing the service and selling phones and things like that. Building the infrastructure and all that is really a pain to them. So what a carrier's carrier is, it's a third party, and they say, "We'll go in, and we'll build the infrastructure in that city," and they have a real incentive to be first because it's expensive to do that. So if they're in there, and they're in there, then they've got control of this pole, and then if they want to charge Verizon X to go up there, and then Sprint says, "We want to be there too," then basically what they're doing is leasing this public light pole or public power pole to the carrier.
So, Dean, two questions. What's the name of the carrier that's looking for that now, here?
I'm not aware of what that is.
Really?
Mm-mm.
Who is aware of that?
Well, I don't think there's been a public application or anything filed that I'm aware of, and that's the same thing with the, this report that went to the city commission, that at this point, we're not dealing with a specific application, we're dealing with expressions of interest and inquiries as to who would want to do that.
How many of our light poles need replaced?
At the time that there is a proposal that goes before the city commission for a franchise agreement, then that would, we would know who that person is that's seeking the franchise agreement. But that has not come forward yet. So this is anticipation of moving in that direction, and in the report there from Mr. Gage, it basically authorized the required use of a franchise agreement for deployment. As soon as we get a request from an entity that's seeking a franchise agreement, then we'll know who that entity is, and then update the city's wireless antenna regulations within the zoning code. That's what we are discussing today.
So if this carrier is charging Verizon, et cetera, all the other, the carrier's carrier, if they're charging them, then I would assume that a franchise agreement, as with Cox, would amount to a certain percentage of their income from the carriers they are carrying?
I think that is why, the purpose of the franchise agreement, it is basically an agreement that allows the carrier's carrier to utilize the public right-of-way, like Westar and Cox, and AT&amp;T, and Kansas Gas are, and that is, it's usually figured as a percentage of gross proceeds, or something along that line. It's not something that they would necessarily volunteer to do, but as I understand it, that this is a two-pronged approach. One is seeking a franchise agreement for the privilege of running the fiber optic cable in the right-of-way, and then the other aspect of that is the placement of antennas on poles and streetlights.
Well, I would say that this is a rather new technology. We've looked at it a lot in schools. It has some benefit for schools because it provides opportunities for children in need to have access to wireless, a little more inexpensively than having to wire their homes. So we certainly have looked at it. Also would provide opportunities for schools to network without running all of those lines that we have to run now from school to school. So it does have some advantages. New technology, I would suggest that the city look at franchise options and not jump on the first group that comes in and wants to do it, because I have a feeling that some companies like Cox and Sprint may be interested in doing this, and we should make some revenue from that as a city, if we're going to allow the right-of-way to be used. With that, I would suggest a text amendment, like a motion, that we do this text amendment thing, allow city staff, city attorney to work with the appropriate people to develop a plan that would allow this system to be considered for Salina, under the conditions that outline on page six.
Second that.
Motion second, any discussion? Hary, none? Take a vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Hary, none, motion passes.
We'll get that scheduled for you. And then the other part, I don't think we need to go into in great detail, but because there have been some delays in the getting our levy actually certified, and the state Department of Agriculture, Division of Water Resources wants to make sure that the city, that there's no question about levy certification, they've kind of pushed back, again, the calendar on the floodplain remapping. So it's anticipated that the work on the levy will be completed by November of 2014, and the levy then certified, and they're looking at, we would be getting some working maps to give them feedback on, and then the public part of that would probably not occur until January of next year, where again, if you'll recall, we had some, a public meeting at the Bicentennial Center, and we had quite a bit of information that went out to homeowners. And again, the important, one of the important parts of this is, we have some 2,000 individual properties in the city that have some form of letter of map amendment, and it's important for the city staff to be able to answer questions for homeowners and say, "I've got this Loma, is it going to be valid under the new map? What is my status going to change?" The other aspect of this, that I think we'll provide some information out at the next meeting, is that the Congress had told FEMA that they wanted them to be more self-supporting, and so their response to that was to go out and spike a huge increase in flood insurance premiums. And one of the things they did was, there was a grandfathering for properties that were built before the flood program went into effect in 1986, and they really jumped the premiums up on some of those properties. And then in response to that, Congress passed a bill that rolled those back, and so we'd want to share that information with you. We had some developers and owners that we talked to that the flood insurance premium increased by $1,800 a year, just an increase. And so, just like the mailbox thing, if that just comes out of the blue and it's unanticipated, it's kind of hard to budget for, so some of that has been rolled back, and we'll try to provide some of that information. But one of the reasons that the flood mapping becomes even more critical is if FEMA's out there jacking up the flood insurance premium rates, then whether you're in or out of the floodplain becomes more of a financial thing. And certainly with affordable housing, being able to qualify for mortgages, having a sudden increase, unanticipated in flood insurance premiums can, and you had a plan to be able to afford payments on a home, then that can really throw things off, whether you're a landlord renting, or whether you're a homeowner. So we'll bring a little more information back on that. But basically, we're talking about, you know, spring or summer of 2016, before the new maps would come into play, and that would be the same with Saline County, because what they're wanting to do is keep the city and the county on the same track. And so, quite honestly, it's, the city's been wagging the dog's tail, and the county's having to wait on the city, and they're going to release the maps at the same time.
Can I give you an example of what flood insurance has done?
Sure.
Being in real estate? I had a client call me, he's in the floodplain, he had it elevated, he can't get out, he's one inch too low. His property's appraised at $140,000. If a new buyer comes in to buy that house, which we've checked on flood insurance, it would go up from $400, what it used to be, to $1,900 a year. $1,900 a year, divide that by 12, it's about $158 a month, and to keep that in mind. At $4.25 percent interest, that's equivalent to $4.29 for every $1,000 of mortgage changes. You take that $4.29 into $158 a month, that goes in there 32 times, and some change. So that makes a difference of $32,000 on the value of that house, just in flood insurance premium alone. That's important.
Yeah, certainly. When you're trying to qualify for a mortgage and make the payments fit, factoring the flood insurance, if it was factored in at one level, and then right in the middle of it, it changes.
It made my cheeks pucker a little bit when I had to tell the seller of that house that his house wasn't worth as much money as the county appraiser had it appraised at.
Didn't they change that, given the new law that Congress did? I mean, that's no longer in effect.
If you're grandfathered in, but if you're a new buyer trying to buy that property, you've got to go buy flood insurance. But if you own that property, still have a mortgage, they aren't raising that flood insurance, they aren't dinging you for that flood insurance right now.
Yeah.
If you're a new buyer trying to buy in the floodplain, you're going to pay the flood insurance premium that they're going to offer you, which that's what they have to offer.
But they did, and that's when they did, basically, that is the case, a lot of people were paying 400, and all of a sudden, they were paying 18 or 1900. And what the legislation did was it rolled it back so that they can't charge the 18 or 1900, they can only go up so much of an increase.
Only to the existing?
Only to the existing, but not to the new.
Right. What happened was that if you had a property built before 1986, you basically had a discounted premium, and they took that away, and the new legislation reinstated that. And so part of the reason we're going to try to put that together and get the information out is that there may be some people who don't realize that they may be overpaying for flood insurance because they weren't aware of the legislation that rolled the premiums back. So we'll put something together and try to get that to the planning commission, and again, to the home builders and board of realtors, so that information can get disseminated.
Did I understand this correctly, and I've asked this question, the levy will be recertified in November of '14, and it appears the Corps is soliciting the bid, so is the Corps then going to fund the recertification necessary items on the levy?
They're going to fund and oversee the work, the modifications that are made to the levy.
So they're going to take care of it.
So the contractors who are successful bidders will be working for the Corps.
Okay. And the city won't have any responsibility to pay for the levy recertification then?
We're paying for this recertification, we're not paying for the physical modifications.
That's what I meant. Okay, that's good news.
Yes, we've paid quite a bit of money to an engineering firm for the engineering part of that.
Okay.
Another example of the effect of that, we had a visit from city commissioner, former city commissioner, at Cedar Rapids, Iowa, I believe, who, where the city commission had approved new development districts a lot closer to the river than might have been. And they did it two consecutive times after two consecutive floods. The third time, they said, "Ooh, maybe we better not do that on the new one." So, you know, there are all kinds of considerations there.
The city hall in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, is in an island in the middle... The city hall in Cedar Rapids, Iowa is in an island in the middle of the Cedar River and it was the first to feel the brunt of the flood, so maybe that's not a bad thing that nobody could access city hall because it was on an island in the middle of the river, but...
Any other items?
Distinct object lesson, however.
We will meet on July 1st. The parking lot surfacing committee is going to meet at 2:30 on the 1st and follow up and then we have a final site development plan for a rib crib restaurant out in front of Lowe's directly north of Dymaru and we'll be bringing you the plans and elevations and things for that to review, not the menu, but the site plan.
Murphy's has decided not to do anything? We don't know what Murphy's is doing?
As I understand it, there are some reciprocal easements and covenants in that development and the Lowe's and the other entities involved did not approve of the plans that Murphy Oil had submitted, so basically they were vetoed by Lowe's. And so I don't anticipate anything happening from Murphy Oil there.
All right, this meeting's adjourned.
Wednesday we'll have mostly sunny skies with southerly winds from 15 to 25 miles per hour and highs 90 to 95. Then Thursday, look for mostly cloudy skies with a chance of thunderstorms and highs 85 to 90 degrees. You're tuned to Radio Kansas.